Okay, I'm in the, in the other room.
What's that, Carol?
I'm in the other room, I'm supposed to be emptying my office.
Are you staying home, me?
No, I'm not staying home.
Okay, so, how do I shut that off?
Just come in and say, Carol, please shut that off.
Oh, alright. But, but you're gonna be in double for the whole meeting.
Yeah, if I, if I.
If you leave before we do?
I'll come in and show some of you guys how to do it.
Just leave the hammer on the table.
So, you have to kind of blunder your way through, right, with the X at the top and then. I don't know. He doesn't tell you how to do it, I got this here, but I have a lot of stuff to. I'll be just in a minute.
What is working on your computer, by the way, you okay? See, we're gonna have to assign a special meeting.
Yeah, I know. I didn't hear anything about Monday meeting, I must, I remember you said you wanna do it on Wednesday, but I must've been young.
If you need me, just come into this door. You know where I am, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm already under there.
Thank you.
We got it. Okay, hey Carol, we on soon?
Yes, we're on.
Who's the one else on tonight?
Uh, as of yet.
Alright, one's turned on here. Alright, so, we'll call a meeting to order. On Monday. November twenty fourth. Uh, first order of business is the minutes. Uh, but before we get to that. Um, Margarita, something she would like to say?
Yeah, this will be my last meeting, 'cause I need to resign, I have some life changes and actually moved to Woodstock.
Are you still on like, as of now?
Yeah, as of right there.
Alright, Steve, well, congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, go along, yeah, go along, her neighbors. Yeah.
I didn't really know, but, well, I don't, I don't know much myself, I don't.
As long as you're still a resident. As long as you're still a resident. Um, Joe's on here tonight, uh, well, Joe's on soon, but he just popped up. I don't know. Joe, can you hear us? Hey Joe, can you hear us?
Oh, there you go.
This, this is Joe, it looks like. Hello? Hello?
It's good to see you again. I don't know.
Yeah, now we can hear you, sorry, you, we could hear you, you just couldn't hear us.
Right, so, we can hear each other now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, Steve, he is not working.
Can you, can you hear me?
OJ apparently is not here either, so, once you grab, you can grab his. Um, so, we have one that's happened tonight, so, one of the office will sit in, see us all. Margarita is not gonna be here anymore, I think we should let her through, because she'll be. Not gonna be here, so.
Strong.
So, you can, uh, you can take OJ's place, 'cause he's not here. Um. Then we'll move on to the minutes. Of the November twelfth. Anyone have any, I have some corrections. Um, when we talk about the impact fee. The gang building, it says the currency at each of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five available, including past fund transfers. And donations, what I said was that there was nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five. Available in past funds. And that there was, I believe it was a three hundred thousand dollar donation, uh, that was given to the Gang Creek Building. Um, to bring it somewhere around one point two million. And that the estimated engineering cost, or estimated cost, construction cost from Stewart Anderson was, uh, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So, that was on line forty-two. Um, on line eighty-seven. Um, again, dealing with CIP. The Chair vote motion to reduce item number. I've already crossed it off, uh, so, one, that's supposed to be one oh nine. Currently from forty thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. And we need to change that, say, item number one oh nine from forty thousand to ten thousand. Then on line number one eleven. Um, Suburbia did step down. And go into the audience during that discussion. Um. For, for the, uh, one of your residential apartments. I think that all, oh, wait a minute, Joe, on there. Uh, on line two eighty. That it was potential follow-up, town attorney, everybody would say, maybe it's not, it's not formally, and maybe incorporated administratively. Uh, we didn't necessarily say, we were, that we said we were gonna contact town attorney. On three twenty-one and three twenty-seven. The motion passed, no changes to sign ordinance, areas are considered a form of science, follow the existing approval process. We made a motion in the second, but if, if we need, whoever made these events needs to go back and find out. Who made the motion in the second, I think I made the motion, but I don't know who second did it.
I like the thing I, I probably did.
Right, and so there was a motion in the second, we just need to clarify, we made that, uh, during the speeding, and make sure that, uh, the second was on there as well. And then on line three forty, this town, uh, we're talking about the impact fee committee. And on line three forty, it says town account manager, and it was the town manager, not town account manager. That was all I had for that. Anyone else have any changes?
I just have one on, uh. Line one twenty-nine, when this guy's fire safety in building design.
Yep.
There was a concern about this one center, their case, we were very specific about that. And at the training last week, um, I found out that that actually hasn't been approved by the state, it hasn't been adopted.
Well, certainly, they, it's in all their, uh, information that they sent out.
Right. I'd say in the legislature, it hasn't been approved, yeah, it doesn't mean it won't be, and if there's other fire suppression, like. Could be, but that, just something that we discussed, and I thought it should.
Give us the legislation, so, the thing, so, it's not been approved yet?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's, it changes what we've been handed out by staff.
Well, he was going back anyways to redesign. At three twenty-five.
Okay. I thought, do you want that line to say?
Just in the minutes, I wanted to say that, that the board has concerns over. That the board had concerns over, they send their.
Yeah.
Just having the one sender, uh, their case.
Okay. You want that around line one twenty-nine?
Yep.
Alright, and anybody else? Mike, Steve? I'll make one, we approved the, whoever twelve minutes has amended.
Uh, second.
I'm second, total in favor.
I, any votes? Right.
Moving on the road. New business, site plan review, South Mont Drive, that's smart school in Main Street, best of LLC. The marketplace currently a new establishment, on my, uh, drive, walk, burn, current, local space, flat employee break room, and boarding house. Probably is located in Village Center District, where the boarding houses are permitted. Um. So. Remember what it is? The one I'm sitting here, mind me full.
Yeah, I like it, we'll head up more. Um, I like to take things off, so, I think this myself, my interest in buildings, I work for Self-Beator, Handman's Freedom Investments, uh, so, speaking on the Mills Marketplace tonight. Kind of recap what you said, the goal is to, something seemed to be, it's going on, maybe turning better, or that's what I think, which I still.
Sometimes they were in backwards.
No, we're ready to do that, so we don't die.
There you go. We need a battery insulation. I must not have children, when we put batteries in.
Thank you. Can you guys give me final ones? You're also.
Yeah. Well. The reason for that is because of the recording that other big comments.
Uh, yeah, so quickly just recapping what we mentioned here, uh, in the Mills Marketplace, the third floor in C four, uh, based off of the plans we submitted. Uh, it's currently set as employee breakout rooms, and we're looking to convert that to the boarding or room housing based off of what's.
Right? Um, so, this is pit for site plan reviews, we're gonna have to go through the application first. Um, before we can go through and open the public hearing. So. Scale not less than one inch equals forty. Well, I don't see that. I see a scale where eight and fifty equals five. I don't see a one inch point scale, so, which will I, yeah? Here, my, I have, right here. Can you do this again?
No, yeah, we're gonna have fun with this one, this is my second application, so, I feel we've done a few laps, so I apologize for.
Well, I can tell you this, if your application is not, not complete, you know, we're not gonna discuss this tonight, you can go back and take care of, as far as I'm concerned. Things that need to be done, alright, 'cause we, we have gone through this process twice, our concern for both of those, you weren't. But, I'm all gonna continue to correct applications, enemy, right?
Absolutely, that shouldn't be happening, so I apologize.
And, and I appreciate that, I, I understand that.
No, that's only so.
Good, I think.
One inch equals thirty.
Okay.
That's the reported plan.
That's the reported one, this is the one you're looking at, right? For both of the scale not less than one inch equals forty, you know?
Four inch and a half to be forty.
Yeah.
They both be. You're trying to do. Trying to get that plan, we're gonna do the screen.
Hey, Paul?
We just.
Oh, welcome. OJ.
So, OJ's here. Hey, OJ.
Just joining now, sorry, I'm late.
Oh, that's alright, so we're, we've, um, gone over the minutes, did you make corrections for the minutes?
I did not.
Okay. So, we're on, um, we are on now, on South Peaks.
The plan's still.
Boarding room that they wanna have over at the.
One inch equals forty.
And we're going down through the checklist, and the first item on there says, scale, plan scale not less than one inch equals forty, and we don't have that. We go to one eighth and inches of.
This is zoom in two inches.
Print it on the bar. Very small.
Zoom in and print this in the bar, I can imagine doing it, but. One plus forty at the bar, and I, I need copies. Okay, you can start on that, I'm gonna. Yep, submit it, yep, yep, it's just the one, it is gonna submit in the proper form. So, one inch equals forty, and then put that on the bar, so, that, when you print it on the bar, it's gonna naturally print the scale out of the stat, which they can all read it, and that's why they asked for that size. And they can just print copies and then come reset with that. Okay, there you go, we're in here. Yep.
Well.
There are. We can table the plans for a moment, I'm gonna have, they're at the office, trying to print them from the size, to make sure it's.
But you're gonna produce those?
Yes, I'm hoping to have those here shortly.
Still not trusted.
It's still looking.
So, if it's not here about that, we get down through, then. And we're in trouble, we gotta do. Yeah. Um, missed digital copy of the prep. That is the prepping minutes of. The time, well, you, you all just sent a digital copy to the town, too.
Yes, yeah, you, you submit it, but it'll also be made, yeah.
The, uh, date title of North Arrow. Was on the two plans, I believe, that you gave us all of the survey plan.
Yep.
And that one was the parking plan, so we'll get that. It's like provided. Name address, the owner and applicant, that was provided, name address of the license plan to bear, that was provided. An accurate plan of the site plan. Uh, showing existing natural features, including water sources, water volume, various types of vegetation. Thoughtful features and any other features which could be considered in the site design, except provided, but I don't.
Stop, provide, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know why, but it's not, but.
Well, this, mine says provided.
The digital, I don't know where that.
So, all I know is the one I had there says provided. Do we have a more recent copy? Do we need to go back, they, should you go back and read through this whole thing, 'cause I'm not gonna go through this like we did that last time.
No, no, absolutely not, I have it right here, not applicable, so, I apologize, I don't know where.
No, 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 it, it just.
I, I'm here in, our traditional applications are through Scott and the other team, as you see with Self-Beat. Good level, I'm here to, kinda, I, I thought we had this, I, I looked at these, so this one's saying not applicable, I don't know how, but. You wanna run down the rest and see if there's anything else before I make another comment on them.
Well, so this one, this one we don't have either, so.
We.
The type, we're going down through, see, I'm actually just, I, I guess in the end, we can either accept the application, Mark. What we'll do is we'll go down through it, and we'll check off what's. What's not provided here, and at, at the end, we get down through, we just have to check the application message.
Right.
Okay? Uh, the type, extent, location of existing proposed landscape and open space areas, and again, whether it's written, they can open space areas, be retained. Mine says provided, mine says. I can see that. How many more do we lack?
That's, that should be off of this out here, according to the town, the proposed part of the plan.
Yeah, that's a green space and open space, that should have had all the easy to support it's on that thing as well. So, that has to also be in, in a one inch equal forty, so we can read it, and I don't think this is one inch equal forty. One inch equals sixty. The last one, I can't see where it says green space. Um. It does show some land statement. Yeah.
It has like, the bushes here, that I don't think there's bushes there anymore.
Right, I don't think it's inaccurate.
This is the two thousand and three.
It's two thousand and six, that was not accurate, let's just keep going down through it, alright, so, let's save that then, and propose to park every other side of two hundred and room, not applicable, applicable. Solar mapping units and unit boundaries not applicable. Bloodline identification areas not applicable. Location of all buildings within fifty feet of the site, and the location of all intersection roads, driveways, and utilities, water, water table within two hundred feet. Your site map does show, um, most of that. Uh, however, it's at wrong scale, so we don't, I don't know where the water and sewer is going to your current building, but it doesn't show that. I guess we probably would have to check that, it needs to be provided in, in the right scale, and we need, uh, gut roadways. You just don't have water and sewer. Um, the location of all building setbacks required by the license plan ordinance. I don't see setbacks on anything here either. Location of all district boundaries, including wetlands, I, that's kind of being, you had. Not applicable, I think that's correct. Water, your street funds, and requirements for minimum lot size. That's not applicable. Location of off-street parking and loading spaces with a layout of the parking indicated, you provided that for the parking plan. Location with curving type of access. Location with curvings and type of access ways and egress ways.
Okay. Yeah.
As she goes. Um. I see the main event there, that could. I see the other reference. Now, so that's okay, so that one says, that one's provided. Location along this, post deed restrictions and covenants, not applicable, are there any deed restrictions or covenants on the property? I'm not going for it. Mark, are there any deed restrictions or covenants on this property?
Deed into the town. Um. I don't think it's a deed restriction. For a, so, I believe an easement. It's just, yeah, I believe that's an easement, so that, that would be correct, there's an easement to the town, but that is located on the site plan. Um, so it's not a.
It, is it on this, the plan?
Yes, it is.
Should be one, it should be, if it was right scale, I think we might, I believe there is one off the back, if, then. Off the back where the, um. Uh, where the, the parking is along the back, I believe there's one there, right?
Yes.
So, we'll need to get, we'll need to get that.
In the right scale.
Easement, no, maybe. We'll need to get the location of, of that, so it's shown on the plan, with the right scale.
The other thing, instead of this getting that, I think it may be more non-applicable, as far as the easement goes, for the, based off the scope of the application.
Well, it's probably on the plan, 'cause if, if you're using this as your plan, all the. And, and the plan is for the whole, whole lot, right, then, then you have to show the. Any deed restrictions or covenants or easements. So, lots to correct that one as well. Survey property lines showing their deflected angles, distances, radius, length, starch, control angles along property lines, monument locations, and names of all the lawyers. Again, I don't see, I see somebody. I can't read it, so I don't really know, it's got you too small, you know what I mean, ones on the left and right, so. Probably, if, if that was, and that one is forty, you might be able to do that, so that one we need to have. If the development is a subdivision, and line names of all post-beach lands, ways even, and then it gets dedicated for public use, all subdivision regulated, shall apply, not enough, hold that time. Plan views of all buildings, either existing or proposed. Plan views of all buildings, either existing or proposed, with their use side location and floor elevations indicated. That says provided, I don't see that either, I, I see that, the one right here, but I don't see anything that shows. The elevations of proposed buildings, and again, their heights. Excuse me, plan views of all buildings, either existing or proposed, and their use size, location, and floor elevation, I, I don't see anything there either. That one's gonna be corrected, well. The physical elevation view of all existing and proposed buildings, indicating their height and signing. Um, I don't know that that's. I think number twenty, but. That's probably not app, applicable, I would say, 'cause there's no signage being requested for this. Site location of solid waste disposal facilities, that would be applicable, and we need to, we need to show where your dumpsters are gonna be there, so. Um, that's, that needs to be, we, we don't have any.
Well, they're on this one, just small now.
Uh?
They're on this small now. They're in the, right here, in the park lot, like, right after the roundabout, and there's the dumpster behind.
Okay, so it's on the park lot, there you go, okay, so that one's provided, it's also, uh, applicable.
Uh, but, when I just.
Go ahead, Carol.
Um, I just got a call from George Nard, who apparently is on, and now I can stick up. He was gonna try to call, um. And participate by telephone, um. I'm gonna see one of the agendas here.
Agenda. There you go. I'm probably looking for the, look.
Well, usually, I also have.
The ID and password, right there, black. On the front. We can, um.
I gotta go, I gotta get them.
That's right, we'll put Margarita back on. So, go from, going, so. Uh, at six twenty-eight, Margarita is back on, is Joe, has stopped due to technical difficulties. Alright, um, locations tied, design of the post-signage, signs of advertising or instructional license, not applicable. Assigned stormwater drainage plan. Assistance for both methods, depending on runoff, not applicable, direction of all runoff, which uses from arrows. The arrow not applicable, the location, elevation and size. All catch basins, drywalls, drainage ditch, swales, retention bases, storm sewers, not applicable. Engineering calculations used to determine drainage requirements, not applicable, all, that's fine. The size and proposed location of water supply and sewage facilities, and provisions for future expansion of sewer and water facility. So, I think that is. It goes with your. Water and supply, water and sewage supply lines, and I don't see those on there, so we probably need to put those on there somewhere.
There should be water and sewer available on the parking plan.
There is.
Just, you should have just gave us the big magnitude ones.
Yeah, what's up with that? On the par, on the parking plan?
Yeah, it's like, on the, the side, the left side of the building, your Virgin Office, they're like little lines.
Well, like I said, I can't see that, so, if I can't see, it's not there. Oh, there we go, I see it, water sewer, sure, water and sewer service ties. Okay, so we'll call that, okay, we'll say that's provided. Right? It's in there. The size and locations, this is for public private utility to make them, and claim provision for fire pitch. Those provided. Are those on that small plan, too?
Um, we have a scale on the site plan, we have the fire suppression layout, um, on the right-hand side, and, uh.
Where, where it's setting it?
Yeah. With planning, looking at, by this, the set, so this is the, this is the breakout here.
This is the fire suppression.
It's on the third floor. So the third floor over the sushi place? Well.
No, I'm gonna say.
On the other side, right, so there's just like stuff in there now, and so you're gonna convert that.
That's it, so I did, okay. Location type of all existing proposed lighting for all outdoor facilities provided.
Yeah.
Building lights, okay, I see that, yeah. So that's provided. Copies of all applications submitted for applicable state approvals and permits, not applicable. I would agree performance guarantee, guarantee or bond, not applicable. Illustration of the tech industry and hot board circulation, not applicable. Illustration of fencing walls and buffers, not applicable. Waivers for non compliance and DOT construction specifications for road parks, streets, drainage bridges will be required. Not at, so I think those are fine. And I think when I look at the whole thing, I see. Number one, scale, number six. That will feature number seven. Complete number eleven. Number twelve, number seventeen. Number eighteen. Number twenty. Those are the ones that I have checked off, it's incomplete, so. I don't think the application is complete. But we're not gonna get past this, so we can correct all those things and come back.
Yeah.
We don't, yeah, yeah, we don't move on until you, yeah, okay, and accept it as a plate. Or we can move on to the public. You got it? But if you can correct those things. Get back on the next agenda, we'll go right to this.
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I won't keep on, like, so you don't have to provide it to any of you, but just a. All right, all right, thank you. Next on the agenda is voluntary lot merger. At one oh seven, lot twenty nine. And and one of those along way nine, that zero one, Suda Road. Good Blue Road. Jackson Castle and Joan Paul, are they online? They don't have to be, it's just a matter of malady. That we accept the voluntary uh lot merger, it's not we we rule out this, but we do have to accept it. So I'll make a motion that we accept voluntary lot merger. Um or. Lots, tax math, lot one, zero, seven, zero, two, nine. Lot zero, zero, zero. Forty six Good Blue Road and lot one, zero, seven, zero, two, nine. Lot number zero, zero, one, zero, 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 also on Good Blue. The demerits, so I'll make that one, I beg it.
For clarification, can we ask for continuance to the next hearing to then not have to reapply?
Uh, yeah, you know, we probably should. That way, that way there we can.
It's starting to notice, it's starting to been out there, set up a whole new application, new fees, new thing, just we we.
I'm fine with that, so um. Since I'm not connected, I'll make a motion that we move this to our next meeting. The agenda for our next meeting, which is. December tenth. I'm second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you're on for this, December tenth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for bringing that up. All right, so I made the motion to accept the voluntary lot merger for those two lots, and Mike seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so voluntary lot merger is done. Next. Under old business. Um, I don't know, I could hear some things, ordinance review. Well, at the last meeting, we went through. All of those ordinances that state has. Given to us. And then. Actually, before we get to that, there's some things that are probably a little bit quick to go through. Um we're gonna go through, so, I'm gonna change this up. Does anyone look at the uh budget? We can get that some love. Uh, Steve, have you looked at? I know OJ is like that. Um. I looked at it, I didn't see any major changes on there. That I was looking at, so. Um I'm I'm fine with it. As a slight prevent presented, by the town manager presented. Okay, that's fine, Margarita is here. Well, Jay, do you know when, when the uh budget's gonna be going to the budget committee? When are gonna be reviewing this planning board budget?
Um, we only had a handful of things that Karina was gonna get back to us on. And I believe we're gonna take that up at the next board meeting. And we will have the budget ready to present to the budget committee after the next Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Have they set a schedule, do you know, as the when? They're gonna meet and and discuss planning board budget, planning budget, you know?
When, who's gonna discuss it, the budget committee?
Yes, the budget committee, yes.
Um, I I don't believe the Board of Selectmen tells them wh- when to meet.
I don't know, I know, I didn't didn't know if you, if you were aware of their schedule, I know you don't tell them when.
Yeah, no, I'm not aware of their schedule at all.
I was trying to figure out, Mike hadn't had the chance to review it yet, so.
Uh, December second.
Pardon me?
December second was their next meeting, I believe.
December second, December second, so next meeting.
Because I was asking about a member for the.
Yeah.
And she said that was the next meeting.
So they, do you know if they, you don't know if they have a schedule on, all right, so let's, let's do this, Mike hasn't had a chance to review it yet. Uh let's put that back underneath the ten, I don't think there's a lot of um things to change on it. Uh but we'll put that back underneath the the agenda for twelve ten. All right. Um, we don't have town planner, uh we don't have impact committee update, so all we're.
Still waiting for someone from the budget committee to answer, and then um. I talked to Karina, and she thought after the first year would be that that was to try to set up a meeting.
Um, town planner update. Um, OJ, I know, I watched the selectmen's meeting last time, and there were some concerns about us getting. Uh copies of the applications. Uh, I guess I'm I'm fine with that. Those concerns, but can we find a way, you think, either redact the names? Or can we get the applications, and we can meet a non-public session where everything we talk about is, can't be. Can't leave the room?
Let me talk to Jason, just to make sure that we don't do anything incorrectly. Um. I don't, I don't know, like, how much. We can redact. Um, you know, maybe if we get rid of name, address, and all of that stuff, and just said, this person worked at.
Right.
Such and such.
Or or if we did it in a non-public session, if you want, wanted to bring him into one meeting. And we could look at him in a non-public session. Because at at that point, everything is a non-public, cannot leave it. Cannot be discussed outside the room, so it could be done that way as well. It's no different than it. I mean, if the name said, if the planning board had put out the request for applications, we could have discussed it anyway. But I understand, you know, playing as a, Karina did it, I understand her concerns about it, but. We can find a way to work around that somehow, either through a public board, through redacting, redacting names, and where they live and stuff, that would be. Preferred, I think. One of those two ways. Will you check on that, Mr. Salt?
I'll bring that up the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um. And then we go on to some, uh, let's see. And go on to the ordinance room, uh, seat a circle update, do you know anything about that? Uh, I know that, a couple pieces of paper in front of me, uh, I did. Price chopper. Legal growth management, no, um. The only thing I have on. On that is that we um. The last thing came from Karina saying that. From South Peak. Saw that too, I think it might have been in the last minutes.
I don't have any update beyond. I believe it was the last planning board meeting, the the um. Houses that South Peak is responsible for, all of those, I believe, have been provided to Ray. Ray, I know responded on one of them, and they've already started um.
Correct.
Doing the the mitigation work. Um, and and again, it it's 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 not like a huge mitigation project, they're digging. Um drainage ditches along the foundation of the house and driveway. Um and filling them with whatever size stone is appropriate. Um but Ray looked at that, approved it, and they're going forward. I don't know, and again, this is two weeks old, I don't know how how many others he has processed and approved, but that's that's where it is right now, is in that. He's looking at the plans and in um working with. Either SCOT or whoever the engineer is to 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 um approve those plans.
And the and the minutes that we just reviewed from uh. November twelfth, it states that um the six lots, shows the six lots, and says, see the circle stormwater management plan submitted. For four lots, Ray has fully reviewed on at least one. And says line of work involves digging, rock placement, trenching, no blasting. Um, so. I really don't care what the fix is, for me. I, the only I look at is, you know, that it is, and it's a non-compliance, and the only thing we need to do is, I think the planning board needs to get something from Ray stating that. He's reviewed it, and that their plans, the plans that they submitted. Meet the requirements of the town ordinance, to me, for me, that that, to me, I think that's all the planning, we shouldn't be telling Ray. What they gotta do, that's for him, you know what I mean, but. What we care about, what I care about is making sure that they've been reviewed, and that Ray has looked at them and sends a planning board. A note, a letter, email, saying that he's reviewed them, which ones he's reviewed, and that. The ones that he's reviewed, whether it's, there's four of them apparently, the other two, I believe, um. Which one is it, Kaplan and?
And the one, the one that Jimmy Martin is building, and that one hasn't started yet, and um.
That has some stormwater management, I believe.
Oh, it does, but the 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 no construction, at least as of as of two weeks ago, had not started, and and. I believe he submitted a stormwater plan, it was about to, and that'll go through the regular Ray approval process. Um, the Kaplan one is not um South Peak, and. I don't know who who the engineer or applicant is that'll um submit the uh changes for that plan. But the other four have been submitted and are at some point of Ray's review.
All right. So we probably need. We probably need something from Ray about the four that he's reviewing. And for uh South Peak. And then the other two, I would think we're gonna need something from the uh uh planning staff stating where they're at. At this point as well, they were different builders.
All right, now, the the one that has not been even started construction yet, we tip, the planning board typically doesn't get. The ongoing correspondence from Ray, we're doing that on the other seat of circle ones, because they will substantially.
Correct. Yes, I got you.
Okay.
Yeah, so Holtzman, which is, I think, the one you're referring to, Holtzman, doesn't need, we don't have, need any. Correspondence on, because they've submitted a plan direct.
Correct.
And Kaplan. Kaplan, I thought, was the one that they said that that they were going to be. It was gonna be added on to them somehow. But I don't know where that, where where that stands as well. I'm just trying to clean up this this non-compliance issue that we have with, so. We either need to get something from Ray that states that. They're in compliance or. Awesome.
All right, I will, I will, like, I know one of them has been approved by Ray, but I don't have anything in writing. I personally don't have anything in writing, I I'll see what he he gave in writing as far as an approval. And um get a copy to the planning board and ask for the same thing for the other three lots.
All right, all right, it'd be great. Thank you, OJ.
Yep.
Um. Uh, let's see, land use, the matrix report. We, we didn't get a matrix report, and we're supposed to get one every two weeks. Um, if we could just, whoever. Um, doing the mess, please make sure to check. Or have, Raina, if you check and see why we didn't get a matrix report, I would appreciate it, thank you. Um, and then. We go on to ordinance review. So everyone get the twenty twenty six town meeting land use order, post changes. These are. What we discussed at the last meeting. Um as far as what we thought we were going to. Have to change as a result of the. Uh changes made by the. Senate, was it the Senate changed it though?
The the whole, the whole legislature and signed by the governor, so the whole process.
So they made that change, and in talking with Karina. And and I think OJ brought it up at the um Board of Selectmen's meeting that. They were gonna ask town attorney Jason some questions about whether we actually had to. Put these on our. As a voted item in March, or do we just put these on, and what happens if we don't vote? Do we, you know, because some of the changes, like the one parking lot thing, I don't really care about that personally, but. And maybe some that people don't wanna change is because the state says it is, what happens if we vote no on it at town meeting, so. And and Sue tonight said that one of the changes, um which change, what was that change again?
Well, no, they were saying that if the state has come down with changes in the legislation. Then we should just, we just need to note it in an asterisk, so say the ordinance is based on parking. The, our town ordinance from, you know, the town residents is this. But then we would just reference within asterisk that it has been changed, the effective date based on that RSA. And this is what it is, state mandated, there was a lot of people at that meeting that were upset. The changes that the state made. The changes that the state made. And, you know, involved towns.
Did, did they happen to discuss? If, whether they need to be voted on at town meeting or not?
Based on what they, uh, my understanding of it is, is they mandated, you can look at. Certain, you can reach out to them to help you look at. Other ways of approaching. Limitations if you want to change something. Such as parking, because I said, you know, that's an issue in our town, where the other town, my aunt had a turn. And he said, you can base parking. On something different than what the state has. Regulated, so if it's based on the number of units versus if it's based on the definition of a bedroom. For example, but he said you would have to go through. Legal to get an opinion on what you could change, and it. And this applies to all the different regulations, and then you would have to, you know, bring it in front of. The voters and make sure that it's in. But there's rules around parking and definitions of bedrooms, but. It was a big discussion.
I'm sure it is, I'm, I'm, I'm sure it is. And, and, and I think maybe one of the things we talk, we should do is. Maybe we should have Jason come as a zoom to the meeting before we, when we get to the end, end of. Before we get to the end of where we're at, and. So give him all the information, and then we try and address that before we have our public hearing on it. Does that sound, you, you agree with that, OJ?
I think his input would be very helpful. Um, we should get him the proposed language ahead of time, and then maybe ask that he respond to it. Through a Zoom meeting at a planning board session.
So. If we could have him, if, if, if. The board of selectmen, I guess, is the one that talked to him, he can't talk to him, so if the board of selectmen talked to him. It, it, and you're our representative, if you could ask them, ask him to. Look at what we, what, what they've done in comparison to what the town has. Like the, the parking one, for example. I, I'd like to leave it the way it is, if we can redefine it some way. And leave it the way it is and get to one point five instead of reducing it down to one, then. We, I, I guess we need to know what our options are, if we have options to kinda like. Continue the way where that, that the people of Lincoln voted it, uh, what the people of Concord voted it.
Each, each one that we've been reviewing, like the additional swelling unit.
Yeah.
Um, the class six rooms, they actually. I know that we reviewed that, but they had some concerns. On that, because I guess that can lead to premature development without proper. Uh, frontage and fire, uh, emergency vehicle safety, so they said. It's not something to gloss over, so I think it is advisable, like they're mentioning, so we're gonna review those and see how it impacts our town. Maybe we're fine with it, maybe it's something we wanna revisit.
Well, I think we were looking at that particular one. As OJ mentioned, I don't know that we have a lot of those class six ropes.
Right, I was just bringing that up.
No, 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 I, no, I, and, and that's one of the, the things that, I know it's gonna cost some money, but. To have Jason look at it. And see the way we have it now versus the way they have it. And, and see if, like you said, if there are any options to be able to keep it the way we have by making some minor changes about. What we're using it for, things like that.
And I believe that residents would appreciate that, because then when they get upset, something does have to pass, because the state legislation has changed. You know, then we've done our due diligence to make sure that. We have to live with those guidelines.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's up to Jason, yeah, Jason, if he can advise us that way, OJ, that would be good. And, and just, we're gonna meet on the tenth, we've got, we are. I'm looking for the dates at which we gotta make those changes. Thought that was right here. So. January twenty-second is the last day for public notice final planning board public hearing on adopted amendments designed ordinance. So we would have to be able to meet and have language done by January twenty-second, is that, you agree with that?
Yes.
The last day for a public hearing is February second. So we could. We need to have Jason. A meeting with Jason before. January twenty-second. And then, then we can revise all that language. And have our final public hearing. On February second, so that does give us a little bit of time, but we still. I think we're kind of in a crunch to get. Jason, I'm fairly busy. But. You're gonna talk to OJ and relay all this to him?
Yep, I have it in my notes, um. But with those deadlines in mind, I think we need to prioritize. What, um. What topics that we as a board wanna look at, because we have whatever, two-page answer from Sarah on things that she. Has suggested, and then we have a list from the town staff on, um, some of the topics that they'd like us to talk about. Or possibly change, um.
So one of our, that we talked about was, what was the? Uh. And, and Karina said that. I don't know if everyone got the. Proposal that, uh, DuBois and King sent to the town, they wanted seventy-five hundred dollars to do the lighting. Specification and. Um. I think there was something, oh, there was something on, um. On the, 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 there was one other thing here, light specification and shore. Shore, shoreline protection, right. So I went online and found. This lighting regulations in New Hampshire communities, how nine towns are working to preserve dark skies. So I found that and sent it to Karina and asked her to give it to everyone. I don't know if instead of paying seventy-five hundred dollars, we can come up with, using this, come up with. Our own specifications, using some other towns. We can do it in-house. And, and research and analyze it ourselves. You say in-house, we don't have an in-house anymore. And Karina's really busy with budget and everything. And Carol's cleaning out her office and getting ready to leave, Jade, I'm sure, is really busy.
I'm sure the town is good.
Right, there, there's, there's a lot of towns that have some.
Lighting ordinance, some, some lighting ordinance prepared.
And I guess. I mean, we keep, we keep kicking this can down the road, but I mean, it, it's one of the things that we get concerned about, and maybe. What we should do is, uh, how about looking at it? How about everyone, did, did anyone have a chance to look at it first?
I did.
You did, I did too.
I liked it, I think it has a lot of raised suggestions here, and we probably could like cherry pick what works for us, yeah. And the verbiage is really great, too.
Can, um. So why don't we do this? Why don't at our December tenth meeting? Everyone look at this lighting regulation. And come up with. If, if you like one town, or if you like language one to the other, just highlight what parts you like. And that way there, um, we can come up with it ourselves. Is everyone, are you okay with that, OJ?
Yeah.
See if I can find this other piece I had, that was pretty interesting, too. Terrible get old, that's only a piece of paper that. But it's, I don't know, I put it in here. I've been back at this. I'll find it in a second. Alright. So we were looking for a definition. Of. Shoreland water. On service thing said. Is there a specific shoreline? Pull up plane. Overlay district, or is it? Or is it the intent to call attention to the NHDES standards, is there a specific? Um, up two hundred and fifty feet, so she was looking for that, and when I looked in, um, just the law. It had a chapter forty-three B, which is on shoreline, shoreline water quality protection act and definitions. And in there, there's a definition. That says protected shoreline means for natural freshwater bodies without artificial impoundments. For artificial impounded freshwater bodies, um, except private garden. Private garden water features, ten pond of less than ten acres, and coastal waters and rivers. All land located within two hundred and fifty feet of the reference line of public waters for segments of the third order. Or lower, which is the way, uh, and I can explain that, third order or lower designated as protected under RSA four eighty-three colon fifteen. Uh, which are either designated after. Or four, which specific sections are revealed that seven thirty-first two thousand and fifteen. Protected shoreline means all land located within fifty feet of the reference land, reference line of public park. And I talked to Karina about this. And, uh, she was, seemed okay with. Using this as the definition. Uh, for the, for the shorelines, because it's, it's done. Through the, uh. RSHF forty-three section B.
On, on that call, you said fifty feet only?
About fifty, it's two hundred, it's two hundred and fifty. Right. Right, this, when you get to the river segments, took me a while to figure out river segments of the third order. And I, I guess, you know what those are, OJ?
No idea.
So they define them by how many tributaries or little rivers go into, so you might have a little, a little stream. Going into another little stream that makes it a little bigger, well, this is of the first order, and then it goes to the second order when it. Hooks up to the, the second stream, and if it goes into it, like a, a, a bigger stream or a river, that's like the third, the third order, so. That's how, that's how they define their, their, the size of the, the streams. Pretty, it was pretty interesting to look at and see, but yeah. But this, but this definition. Is pretty much within what we are currently doing. You know, so. If we can use that. And. Go with the dark sky thing, I think we can take care of. Sarah's concerns about the lighting standard and the, uh, draw plan overlay district, uh, definition. So. If anyone wants this definition. I can certainly leave and. Have Karina make coffee for everybody.
That one that you had, was that from the state?
It's one I got on as, uh, revised states, uh, statute such on the, under forty-three dash B four.
Think I've looked at it through a red book from the state, and I think it has.
Oh, that's true, it, it would be in our.
It'd be in the red book, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, it's under, uh, section four eighty-three dash B colon four.
Four eighty-three?
Four eighty-three dash B colon four. Four eighty-three dash B is the, is the actual. If, if you look that one up, you can get into four eighty-three B four too, but it took me a while to find this, but it was, uh. It gives you a lot of. A lot of definitions of butter, accessory structures. Apartment commissioner, pervious surface, it gives you a lot of definition that they, they use in the RSAs. And that's where I, that's where I found that one on protected shorelands and. It, it seemed to fit, so. Um, if, if we can, if everyone looks at that and agree with it, what we'll do is we'll just. Take a vote on it, and we can, uh, we can come up with that. Dark sky lighting thing, that'll get us at least pass those two. Are there any other comments on that? OJ, you got any comments?
Yeah, I, in looking at what Sarah wrote to us, I think the thing that stood out to me the most was her comments on. Our storm water management. And that it, we don't even. Trigger storm water management until either the site. Coverage or the disturbance coverage, I should say, is over fifty-five percent. Or, or. What's the minimum size square feet, five thousand?
No, no, seventeen.
I'm, I'm sorry, OJ.
Her comment, her comment was that, that. Um, that we don't, that, uh, site disturbance doesn't even trigger the storm water management act until it hits. Our threshold of fifty-five percent.
Or seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand square feet. And, and it seemed like she had. Like was flabbergasted. Just reading her language that we didn't even like. Do anything for, for things that didn't trigger that. And it kinda makes sense, the more we're building, not we, more that, that in town, people are building on steep slopes. That they could avoid the storm water management plan. By building something, you know, that doesn't disturb seventeen thousand feet and comes in under the threshold. But still drastically increases the water runoff from their lot. And I think we need to look at that in either, um. I, I, I would like to get her input, like, I, I don't know if we wanna mandate storm water management plans for every single. Thing developed, I think that's, that's an overreaction, but I think allowing someone to, to do it, to, to, to disturb. Something on those steep, steep slopes. And not even provide a storm water management plan if they, if they're under the. Um, fifty-five percent. Which is still a lot of disturbance, that, 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 there needs to be something in between there. And, and maybe that is gradually stepped up by the overall steepness of the land. Like maybe if it's a zero to five percent slope on the land, just leave our regular, um, existing. Um, thresholds, but as it, as it gets to ten percent, maybe they're a little stricter, and it gets to fifteen percent, maybe they're. Much stricter, and they get up to the twenty and twenty-five percent. Which never even used to be built on, may, maybe there's a threshold of, of steepness that says, we don't care if it's five hundred feet, you gotta do a storm water management. Plan. Um, anyway, that's her one comment that, that stood out to me as being, um. As raising her eyebrows, like, wow, we don't even care about. That kind of, you know, storm water management plan. And maybe we should look at that on the December tenth meeting.
The, uh, what she said, that's concerning, exactly what OJ said, because of. A lot could be sixteen thousand square feet of pervious surface area with no requirements for submitting a drainage analysis. Uh, she says, in my experience, if there's an increase in pervious area at all. ID a hundred square feet, drainage analysis, my experience is, um. Analysis is typically required, so the app didn't demonstrate that you're not increasing clothes off the property. I mean, I don't know that I agree with her, in that regard, when it comes to down to like a hundred square feet. I mean, I. I agree with what you're saying, I think that there's a. A percentage of slope. That says, uh, under this percentage of slope. Um, here's our normal ordinance and it applies. Over this percentage of slope, you are required to automatically do storm, storm water management. And I think it's a matter of picking what that. Uh. Percentage of slope is. And I don't know who, who would help, to me, I think maybe. I mean, we're, we're going off of Sarah's, but I mean, is, does the state? Have anything, the only reason, the only hesitation. Excuse me, was, was, he was a DuBois and King, is that. It ends up costing a lot of money, like, the one, when we were gonna look at the dark skies and, and the other one. Shoreland, it's gonna be seventy-five hundred bucks. And I don't know, as you've said off before, whether we can. If, if, if we had a plan, and we could have someone do some research during the day, you know, during the day, and, and find out. What, what the state, if the state has a standard for, um, steep slopes, you know? Um, or other towns, if they have standards for steep slopes. To me, that would be, I mean, I'll, I'll try and look up some and see what they say, but I mean, it's certainly, to me, it would be much. Simpler and address what you're saying. As far as the concerns of the steep slopes.
Alright, I will do some research on it before December tenth. And obviously, you're welcome to do it too, and let's bring in some, some ideas of, of what other towns have done. I know that there's towns that, that have a, a, a limit, that, that they say if the lot is like. More than twenty percent. You can't even develop it. With or without storm water, without, just, you can't, no. I don't, again, I don't think. I don't, again, I don't think we in Lincoln want to do that, because. You know, just just, I don't care if you look at South Peak, Forest Ridge, Campus World, there's there's a lot of steep slopes. Um.
I don't, I don't know how. I mean, someone put this in, I think, who has made our package, put in the growth management, timing of development and provision. Prohibition on local moratorium and permit limitations. It pretty much says no ordinance regulation or policy being being acted to enforce delays or restrict the issuance of building permits. Uh or the approval of subdivision cycling due to growth maintenance concern municipal service capacity or for any other reason. So, I'm not sure, this would be a question for Jason, I think, can we put, could we put a restrictive? Stormwater management percentage of slope in and says, okay, you get a fifty percent slope, and maybe the applicant has. Not millions, but billions of dollars and says, you know what, I can put stilts on this thing and. Drive pilings in, concrete in, and I can put it on this, you know, I mean, I can put engineered. Retaining walls to hold everything, if if you see what they do in other parts of the country, that's amazing what they do on some steep slope stuff, you know? That I I I don't know if we could restrict that or not, I think we probably should ask the question.
Well. Other towns I know in New Hampshire have restricted the maximum amount of slope that you can build on. Um and it, you know, and I'm, so I I know it exists. You know, maybe it's not legal, but they're getting away with it, but I'm not recommending that we do that, I I would like to take a more. Reasonable approach that says we know there's some steep land, we know that that. You know, like at at um Cedar Circle, there's this, you know. Crazy amount of coverage and slope up there, but they've found ways to to mitigate that. Um I just think that we need to to look at what our thresholds are. Um and I agree with you, I don't want to take a flat piece of land, I look at the development we did at the Whale's Tail. And I'm not involved in that anymore, so I can use that as an example, but we had seventeen acres of. Relatively flat land, I think there was like a three foot difference between the one side and the other. Of over seventeen acres, and every time we came in, we disturbed more than um X amount of square feet. But we didn't need to do a stormwater management plan, because basically every project we did was. Running off into onto our own land. Um and and it just didn't make sense to need to do it, we could see where the where the water went, we had water features in the park with with. Couple of different ponds. It it, you know, common sense says that it wasn't an issue. And I think there's other places in town that are flat enough that we we just, you just know that it's not gonna be an issue, because it's so flat.
Right, but if if I could inject this for a minute along those lines, OJ, I also remember. The Lincoln Law cabins.
Hmm.
Real flat lot. But the water had to run somewhere because of the. They were making, they made so much pervious surface. And it was running out, I believe on the back, I don't know if it was over towards Bartless property or not. Remember, and and there was some issues, people complaining about that, so. Those are the things, I think, even though they look kind of flat. It's the amount of impervious surface that you're creating, and that one didn't meet the threshold, but it affected a neighbor.
Same thing with that soon.
Or same thing happened to you?
Yeah, it's only thirty.
Same, see, remember when all that, and so they went in there, so even the smaller ones, I don't know how we get out and make enough.
It's a spaced lot, thirty inches and thirty feet, but it messes up.
I I don't know how we make an ordinance that addresses every. Everything from the the smallest to the largest, to the steepest, I mean, how do we? How do we make something that is that all encompassing without? Without affecting development or homeowners or how do you, I mean. If you make it so restrictive that they they gotta put. Huge money into stormwater management, then it's not gonna be cost effective for maybe. Someone's child i- in in their backyard, you know, they're gonna, steep slope goes up back and they want to put something there and they're willing to give it up, I don't know. I don't, you know, there's gonna be.
There's something in regulations that already said. No matter what you do, you can't send more water off your property than the property you're part of.
If you, if, well, that's what stormwater means from this, you can't have any more. Post than you did pre. That's stormwater management, if you don't meet. And this is what Sarah's saying, if you don't meet seventeen thousand or fifty five percent, I think it does. Disturbance qualification, then you don't even have to file for stormwater management, just build it.
But then you may have trouble with the butters.
But then i- if you send water off onto somebody else's property. Then that's an issue that then they have to, what they have to do is, this sounds a bad way to say it, but then maybe it's not. Unrealistic, it it then becomes a. An issue for two homeowners, and the town doesn't have to get involved. You know, the the town's ordinance only deals with a certain thing. And if it comes in below that. And someone sends water onto your lot and they they disturb less than the seventeen thousand and fifty five percent. And and you're sending water off your neighbor's lot, to me, that's, I don't, is that a legal issue that they then? Should have to take up, or I mean, we don't do, for example, a- and I compare that to. Um. Condo condos, condominium developments, we don't. Get involved in their bylaws or their rules and procedures, because that's the thing. As long as they meet the town's ordinance, that's all that matters, if they have something that's a little more restrictive. We don't say, you can't do that until you meet the the um the bylaws of the. The the development. I don't know, John, I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can get. Both, I guess, you know. If we set. If we set. Maximum standards, which is what we've done here with the seventeen thousand and fifty five percent. Anything that's minimum. If they, someone sends some. If they disturb less and they send water onto someone else's lot. The other person would have to take an report, I guess, or and say, you're you're putting water on my lot, which is affecting something. I don't know. Is it, does it count, I mean, I I look at what we do with Steve and then. I get confused with the two or conflicted, because we should be protecting some of the smaller pieces of property as well.
Two, three years.
Yeah, I mean. So how do we, I don't know, make that.
How do you three, six months on jack, that's a case of fools.
I don't know. I. Do we talk to legal about this, do we? Do we look at state ordinances and see what's out there, do we, I mean, because it's it it's a pretty big. And and if you look at the ordinance, and I didn't bring the stormwater management ordinance with me. Imagine that. The um.
My suggestion, Paul, you know, we looked at, you know, getting Sarah to help us with a lighting um ordinance and a and a um. Uh, what do you call it? Y- y- you know, those to me aren't anywhere near the issue in town. As stormwater management does, and I think that. If, and maybe she doesn't have to write the whole thing, but maybe we could, a- a- and and again, she's on leave until whenever, right? But maybe someone from her, her um. Engineering company could talk to us about what are our options for this, that we don't want to. We don't want it to be, you know, onerous, but we want it to affect, you know, so that you can't dump water onto your your. A butter's property, or you can't increase the amount that that goes on to your butter's property through development. Um how do we do that? And that might be worth spending the money on, because that is the big issue in the town of Lincoln.
So. Thinking out loud here. Sarah's had very little. And she's she's new to coming in and and I voted heaven D and K and I voted to them, but. Ray has had a lot of experience with Lincoln. And stormwater management.
Yeah.
That I think one's better than the other. But. I mean. Hate to spend money, but it's it is is a would be worth it to have. Two of them or. Work on. One ordinance that, because Ray has the experience of what Lincoln has and Sarah might have some experience, if they could. Both those, I don't know, I I'm just speaking out loud, but it just seems, Ray has the experience, Sarah's. Sarah might have some too, so do we just pick one, is that the recommendation?
I would say pick one, and the first question is, is when is Sarah available?
Yeah.
Out completely out on pregnancy leave, and I don't know when that when that ends.
I'm allowed to talk to her, OJ, I can't.
Well, well, let me, let me see if she's even available.
Okay.
But I I mean, I think Ray would be able to help us, you're right, he has had more experience in the town of Lincoln. Uh with stormwater than Sarah.
Right.
Sarah might have more municipal experience because of her involvement, um at, you know. Working for a municipality as well as being an engineer, but maybe we start, if if Sarah's not available, I just say we start with Ray.
Alright.
Alright.
Everyone agree, everyone agree?
Yeah, alright, good.
I don't want to beat this to death, but it it it's important enough, as OJ said, to kind of. Stormwater management is something that. No development or contractor lights. But it's a necessary evil that try and protect. Everyone from Steve Noseworthy's and the Lincoln Law Homes to the big homeowner that's building on the steep slope, it just. It's how do you do it, so, I mean, you really don't want to hamper.
But if you don't have the backside, it's devastating.
Well, the thing about it is, it's a cost, I look at the cost, and I don't know how you rationally take a look at. The cost of stormwater management, installing stormwater management. For a small residential home over here. That's maybe three hundred thousand dollars, you know, versus a three million dollar. House over at South Peak, I mean, it it's the same, i- if you, and you you gotta be fair, so it's. You gotta be fair to everybody, whether it's the smaller house here or the bigger house there, it just. There's a lot of thought that has to go into it, I think, so that it's.
We we ran into that problem, didn't we do something with Franklin Street, I'm I'm trying to remember, two families came in. There's one guy.
The one that were up on the stilts, that was another.
Yeah, the water flowed into the yacht and made a big puddle.
Yeah.
Flooded out.
Went down the whole street.
Yeah, went down the whole street, but he mitigated, the one that, I forgot the guy, but he mitigated, he took care of it.
There's an old saying, every action has an equal and opposite reaction, so I'd be careful of that. No matter how small it looks, it's kind of renovation.
Alright, so on the stormwater. Since I can't talk to Sarah, can you find out?
I will, I will find out what Sarah's working status is. And then we'll take the appropriate move to either talk to her about this or talk to Ray about this.
Okay.
And can I, can I just ask a question, I mean, we, anything built within two hundred and fifty feet of the river is subject to the New Hampshire D E S.
That's exactly what we're gonna use as a definition.
But that already applies, correct, for like everything in South Peak or, because those are protected soil.
Right, right.
So that's already.
That's already in play.
Okay.
Right.
She kind of.
She just lost off thing, it fits the intent to call attention to the N H T E S standards of two hundred fifty feet. That's why I went and looked for the. Standards for. All that.
Yeah.
Um the other thing that we that I looked at, that we looked at, and I looked at was. A definition for. For de minimis change. And there's a lot of different. Places. About de minimis.
Hmm.
And what the requirement is, because there's there's no real. A diminished change is something that is so slight and so small. That. Uh let's see, and and I can read an overview of it. In the context of the planning boards and zoning, a diminished change refers to a minor trivial or insignificant deviation from. Approved plan to zoning requirements, it does not warrant formal legal action or a full public hearing. The principle is that impact of the change. Is so minimal that rigid compliance with the original regulation or plan is unnecessary to preserve the public interest. Or to spare of the zone. Um that's one thing, I mean. And and the town of Eastern Mass, they actually have a whole. That and that is all on what a diminished diminished change is. So, I mean. We probably should have, we don't have a definition of de minimis in our. Forces. And we should have. We've got a lot to reach, we've got a lot to reach, I don't know how much of this stuff we're gonna go through and do, but. Um. We seem to use de minimis a lot, or de minimis, and if we're. If someone comes in and they're saying that change is de minimis, we ought to be able to have a. Definition of what that means, that way they when they say, oh, I'm holding a blue plant also on the property line. Twenty feet, it's way, twenty feet is pretty long, you know, it's, so at least you'll have something, but. Um.
There's probably no such thing as de minimis. Yeah, it's gonna be something different.
What I will do is, I will take, I will give these to Karina. She can put them in the package for the next meeting. And you can look at them and see what you think. Does that sound?
Yep.
Okay. So we're getting there.
Um, one one other um ordinance question that I had is regarding. The um in our sign ordinance. The um topic of off premise sign. And I know that that. This has come up in our discussions before, and I'm not sure if we're all in agreement, um. And I've not sought legal advice on this, but it seems to me that an off premise sign. Is not even legal under the new, the the Gilbert ruling, that you have to read the sign to know if it's valid or not. You don't know if a sign is off premise until you read the sign and say, oh, that business is not located on this property. So to me, that that whole terminology of off premise sign should be removed from our ordinance. Um however, I'm not sure if the whole board is in agreement with that, or even the staff is, and I know that there was a um Z B A hearing. Last week regarding someone who was asking of or wanted a waiver for an off premise sign. Um. I don't know what the result of that was, but I'm not sure if that's enforceable. And I didn't know if the planning board was um. In agreement that we should just get rid of that terminology, or if we needed. Someone from the legal community to discuss whether that. I- i- is even a a valid concept under the Gilbert ruling.
I I. I'm probably one of the ones, OJ, that has a little bit of. Thinking that it's not. That he's, I I think that off premise signs can be regulated. Because it's like, you can regulate a sign, e- even if you can read it, you can regulate it because of its size. Or its location. So you are, you know, and and the fact that you can. Regulate it by its location. That leaves itself into an off premise sign, because the location is what you're saying, is that it can't be at an off location. And and I don't know, if we could change our sign ordinance to say. Um instead of calling them signs. Could we call it advertising, and would that get us out of this whole sign ordinance thing?
No.
You can't call a sign something different.
Uh I mean, you can do what you want, I mean, the question, will it will it hold up in court, you know? Your honor, that's not a sign, that's advertising. I mean, is he gonna agree with you, and then?
Well, that's on, you're right, and 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 I think that's where legality is coming in, and. As as in any court case, you have one side versus the other, one attorney says is presenting this side, the other attorney's presenting the other side. They both sound pretty good, so you really, someone, the judge in the middle says, this is where we're gonna go. But, I mean, to me, I don't, I don't think we ought to allow. Off premise signs, and the reason that the town voted on all all that was because we were getting. A lot of signs in different locations that were not where the location was, so they it signs were popping up all over town. And that's why we said, no, we we don't want all these different. Signs, I mean, e- even you said it, when all those little. Small stabbing the ground signs, it makes the town look cheap, it makes it, you know, it looks crazy to see all those, I mean, we still have off off.
Alright, so 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 my question was, is the board in agreement that we should get rid of it? Obviously, the board is not in full agreement, so instead of discussing. Obviously, the board is not in full agreement, so instead of discussing it, do we want to get some input on whether that i- i- is valid to leave in the ord, our ordinance as is, if there, or if there's any changes that should be made so that we are able to legally enforce it?
I would think your last comment would be more relevant to my liking. Are there any changes we can make? Or is it legally enforceable the way it is now? Would be the first question I would ask. If it's legally enforceable the way we have it now, then we can leave. If it's not, then, then we have to find out what we need to do to change it, or if we can.
Okay, let me then ask that question. That'd be a good Jason question. He's familiar, more familiar with anyone with, with uh sign rules.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was the only, the, the only other issue I had.
The um, let me get into the one one thing. Just a little bit. Because we have staff recommendations and their ordinance reviews.
Yeah.
Does everyone have those? You're like, yeah, soon you gotta find them. Do you have one?
Uh, I do, but I don't have the time.
Yeah, we have. And they have one, two, three, four, or five. Five is six, six pages of I am to planning board discussion on staff observations and considerations. You have that, OJ?
I, I have it. I don't have it with me right now.
Okay, so, okay, so not, it doesn't seem like anyone has it, but the staff's taken the time to go through and do this. I went through every bit of it. I think a lot of it, there, some of it's, I think it's merit, I think some of it needs to be come to the planning board for conceptual. You know, and, but I guess I'm light in the fact that there's a lot of people that are going, why don't we say that we'll review the uh, we'll review the staff recommendations um observations and considerations on ordinances at our twelve ten meeting as well. We got a lot of homework, kid.
We're gonna say, well, a lot of.
Well, I, if I'm, I'm not doing the right thing, so I'm gonna tell me here. It seems like we want to look at the ordinances, but the only way to do it is to do it in one of the meetings, so we can all say how we feel, and then you okay with that, OJ?
Absolutely.
Staff recommendations on twelve ten. ordinance. Alright, um. Let's get that in, I don't know what's going. The, the, yeah, I already got that out. Um. So, we talked about the five inch fine of stone, I think there's something here from one of the bone boardman officer, Price Chopper back parking lot, planning board concerns. All, all Paul Bartlett has been, oh, Paul Bartlett has been in the hospital over the past month. And it doesn't sound like he will be out anytime soon either, so I've not been able to make contact with him about the front lot finishing up bad. Louis Pachet, one of his partners, has been out of state for the past couple of months. And unavailable by phone as well. I was finally able to get through to Louis this morning, and he will be returning back to Lincoln area next month. And will be attempting to finish the asphalting of the to that. Kind of got to separate asphalt, they're all close.
Yeah.
The asphalt in the turnaround areas and dress off the three-inch stone runoff areas behind the asphalt line to the edge of the property line, you can turn, so over the asphalt plant, they're shutting down for the season. And he's battling labor force issues as well, but I think the next couple of weeks, we can access how's it's going for him and see how he's making out, leave the vibe that there's something else you would like me to do in the meantime. I won't be a hard ass, but you know, these, these people come in and we ask them for things. And they know what we need. And we all leave and we make agreements. And honestly, and stuff happens. But I mean, I don't think it's fair to the town to have the water come off and maybe having silt and all that stuff go where it shouldn't go because someone's either out of town and they got something else they gotta do and you know, I, 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 I don't know, OJ, I just, it, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem fair.
It is extremely dangerous to, right? Isn't that land asbestos filled?
Well, it, it's not extremely dangerous, but just what could happen if you get a big runoff is that that could erode the silt and send it down onto the town's property, which is something the town really doesn't want to do. Maybe, maybe what we could do is send him a letter. How about this? How about, how about if we had the board of selectmen, send him a letter saying if you don't get it done before winter, um, any, anything that happens to the town property, um, we will expect you to take care of repairing or mitigating. Could we do that? Does that make sense? The, the, I mean, because when people come in and make
How, how long ago was it that that was?
I, I looked back, it was August thirteenth.
I was gonna say, it was a couple of months.
Maybe when we give approvals like that, we may, we don't.
The timeframes.
They should come up with their own timeframe. These are adults. Like, you know, like.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I don't know what we're gonna hold people saying, so I think we just, but when it gets, it's obviously push comes to shove. I mean, because then you get to the end of the timeframe and they go, okay, who's gonna keep track at the end of the timeframe? Was it Sean? Is it police? Is it the planning board? And I mean, and that's one of the things that the I was gonna say is, I mean, it's hard for us to keep track of when we, we make change. We've already had one where, where was that one recently today?
Uh, which, which one was that?
Um. Supposed to be checking on whether or not something was done. It wasn't this. I thought it was signs. We're checking on signs one. Yeah, signs, not the one. I mean, ju- just, yeah. Stay look at see the circle, I mean, a- anyway.
Would, would a deadline though encourage people to hopefully get it done?
Well, no, I think.
Regardless if we, like, you crack of it or not, right? So the, the situation's gonna follow up again, just like this. And then we could be like, oh, well, he said on this day that you had it, you're supposed to have it on this day.
So, I think people learn more by experience. And the word gets out. So once the, if the board of selectmen is in a corporate agency, once they find out that, you know what? If I come in and say, I'm gonna do this, and I don't do it, and the board of selectmen says, hey, look, you're gonna do this or else anything that happens as a result of it, you're gonna have to fix. One sack gets out, and, and those words get out, people, I mean, that's what happens. You, you get picked up for going over the speed limit, you only do that a couple of times, you know, you know what, they're gonna be looking for me now. So, it's I don't know.
Those big decisions are a bit of a tough stuff.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's sick. Go ahead.
I, I think that there should be such approval condition, there should be timeframes. Because that way a person has an idea when they need to do it, and I mean, we as the planning board, I gotta say, I think that we should be on top of that as opposed to say, for example, with this thing with Bartlett, say, okay, uh, this is August by end of September. Let's just give it a date, September thirtieth, you're gonna have all the stone in, everything squared away. So when we have that meeting closest to that timeframe, we should have that on our agenda, so we place it there. Just like my phone, I have a schedule. If I'm doing something next month, I put it in, I give myself a like a week notice. And it pops up on my phone and says, hey, next Monday, you gotta be here or something. I mean, I, I don't think it's overkill.
We, and, and I'm recalling where the discussion came. We were talking about the weak conditions on something. Who's checking on whether those conditions are followed?
Yeah, I was talking to you about that.
Yeah, we were talking, there was someone who came in, we were talking about, so, so we had this matrix report. And I, and I think we talked about whether on the matrix report, if you put on here what, what the conditions were. And maybe, I mean, I'm not sure whose responsibility is, but to me it would be, I would think code enforcement? I'm guessing, yeah, but I mean, if, if the planning board puts a condition on, who's the one that's supposed to check and make sure that condition's being followed through? What's your opinion, OJ? They won't put you on the spot, but it's kinda like.
Yeah, I don't know.
Sounds like Sean.
I, I, I mean, I think, you know, Sean takes a lot of that, you know, upon himself to do. Um, but again, before Sean, no one checked.
Right.
And he's, he's, he's mostly doing all of that um development up, you know, at South Peak. And then all of the big commercial projects, like, like the Common Man and the hotel next to it, and, I mean, uh, you know, Forest Ridge project, I mean, that's where he, he's spending his time. You know, something that was built in the eighties and they stirred up the backyard. Uh, you know, it's, it, I, I'm not saying it should, but it, it falls under the radar. Compared to Common Man and the hotel and Forest Ridge and all that stuff, so.
Right, I, I mean, when I take a look at, and, and I'm not picking on Sean. It, it's the process by which, see the circle, happened. Okay?
Well, let's, let's go back to, let's just talk about Price Chopper or that plaza again.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, but it's the same, O, O, OJ, it's the same thing. We we need to define within our, I guess, within our ordinance, or maybe within our rules and procedure, maybe, how and it is defined about how and who takes care of violations. And a violation is something that, to me, that's a violation if you don't i- if you don't do a condition, that's a violation of your approval. Because you had conditions that were set and you didn't do it, so it's a violation. To me, at that point, it should go, and, and our ordinance speaks to it, that it goes to the board of select. You know, and, and I don't know if that's if that's where it needs to go, or does it need to be followed through a little more, or how, I mean, you, the board of selectmen typically doesn't handle a lot of violations. And I don't know if that's because it's not brought to your attention, or if it's.
Well, you know, I when, when, if you're talking about Cedar Circle, there were violations, and it was acted upon um immediately, but not with the planning board. It was get, get new designs, you know, to figure this out, fix the problem, get ready to approve it and make it work, and that's, that's the process it went through. It was a small, it was.
It was a whole year, it was a whole year of four ninety.
Alright, alright, and, yep.
I, and, and I'm not gonna beat on on Cedar Circle anymore, because we know what happened. I'm just saying there needs to be a process going forward so that when things do happen, like this rock thing, and the gentleman comes in and says, whatever, Louis Pachet, he comes in and says, we're gonna, you made, you made the motion and, and, and we, we said, yeah, this is what we wanna do, walk five inch fine of stone put there, so it doesn't, erode the soil and go back onto the town property. Well, here we are now. Coming on the end of November, and it hasn't been done, and it was August, and guy is out of town and he's, he can't finish the pavement. And there's no sense to do the stone before he does his paving. I mean, he could, I suppose. If you do that stone, it would just be higher than this pavement. I, I don't know, to me, you're better off to be the paving person and you know what your elevation does when you put your stone in. But I think the board ought to send him something, board of selectmen under enforcement, and say, you said you were gonna do this, you didn't do it. And just make him aware that it's his responsibility to fix whatever happens as a result, I guess. Uh, I'm doing a little, what's everyone else saying?
No, well, you heard from me. I, I say we, we put timeframes. There has to be a, a point where people know they gotta get things done. If you and I say to each other, hey, we ought to go out to lunch sometime, we're never gonna go to lunch. If I say to you, next Tuesday I'm available, you're available, you say, yeah, okay, we go to lunch. But if you don't put it on the calendar, you don't give a date, you don't give parameters, it just floats. Do you think so?
Wasn't he a violation, we called him in, he just, that's what was happening? Okay, and so I feel like if the planning board approves something, the stipulations, we should give dates. And we should require them to, them to follow up with us. And then possibly, just like you would if you were a landlord, you could give written or legal notice that they're in violation. And possibly, there could be fines. I don't know if that's something that we can institute, but um.
It's like.
Because it, to me, it doesn't sound much different, and I don't have all the history on Joe, but there was a date that he was required through court to remove something. And you guys had to approve extending the date.
Well, yeah, there was a selectman that.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm saying like.
They were the ones, but, but it was a, a selectman who.
If the plan.
They Joe.
The planning board want, and I think you can be selective on whether planning board, you know, if it's something minor, like moving a trash barrel. That's one thing, but if it's something like this that has implications that it could damage our property, it could send more pollutants into the river, um.
Well, it would have to go a long ways to get to the river, but it would go on the town's property, this one here.
So putting those dates in, I think, because the definition of reasonable period of time is like over into interpretation, like you said.
Right, right.
What it, and that, that can be a communication with the person that's here, saying, okay, you can tell us when you think they can get this done. They either need to get it done, or they need to report back to us. And then it's not putting it on, it's not putting it on somebody else's back, it's putting it on the property to report to us, or they're gonna get legal notice from us.
Well, I understand, but and, and I think dates are great. I, I, I'm fine with that. Problem is, who's going to follow that to make sure that they come in? I know you're saying, I know you're saying it is the proper hour, but if they don't come in, they're, they're gonna say, if I don't come in, maybe we'll just forget, and I'm kind of.
Well, we've been keeping some things on our review. Like Cedar Circle and.
Yeah, but we've been doing that.
That's what we're saying.
Right.
You need to remember.
Right, so I'm saying, when I'm saying if we give a date and tell someone, you need to have this project done like such and such, I think if we don't hear anything from them before that date, maybe within a week or so, maybe a letter, an email, some level of correspondence, have you completed or done the jet? And then at that point, maybe Sean gets dispatched to say, alright, go check it out. They said they did what they were supposed to. It stays with us because of, like, Paul, you know what I hear so much? Don't ask permission, ask for forgiveness. And I am so sick and tired of hearing that. Because, because I, it's, it's everywhere.
Could we? OJ, what do you think about having a another matrix report of sorts, a report that's done by the planning staff? That whenever there's a um, site plan review and we institute conditions or waivers or whatever, that it's tracked by the planning staff, especially the, I, I would say conditions especially, that it's tracked so that they can go back and look at it, because that, you know, you, you might have six or eight site plan review applications and, and approvals. And it's gonna be hard for someone to remember all of those. So if we had some sort of a file from the planning staff or a matrix report that had just, it was just for conditions or something like that, that were there, it, it just brings it to someone's attention and says, oh, yeah, I know we could have looked at that one, because that one, they were supposed to do that. Did they do that?
Or maybe don't.
I think.
Go ahead, OJ.
I, I think as a first step, the planning board should institute the deadlines that we're talking about. Because without those deadlines in writing as part of the conditions of approval, Um, then it's very judgmental, like, okay, he said he was gonna do it. He's not done yet, but there was no deadline, so. Uh, you know, it's just, it's wishy washy. If 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 the condition of approval said by September thirtieth. Asphalt, three inch stone, done. That's easy to track.
And not only that, you're right, cause not only that, it gives you. If for some reason the applicant said, I'm not taking you to court, I'm not gonna do that. You can say, wait a minute, you agreed to this and agreed by this date and you didn't have it. So maybe that helps the town out as a whole. So. Maybe we should be putting. Um, something in our. In our, in our, uh, lane use permit, to make sure that dates are assigned for for all.
Well, it should be in our conditions of approval.
Conditions of approval, right.
So when 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 we vote on a site plan or whatever, there should be findings of fact. Conditions of approval.
Right.
And deadlines, uh, if appropriate for some of those conditions. Some of the conditions are. You know, of uh, upon completion or they last forever.
Yeah, but that, right.
But you know, so they don't have, but there's no deadline.
The the deadline could be, they last forever. The deadline could be, they're for, they're gonna be. They're only for a month. So the deadline could be, they gotta be completed by next week. I mean, that's, as long as you put the deadline on.
Right.
But that's gonna be in the, in in the lane use permit, I think. That it can't go without, conditions can't go without a.
But but, yeah, right. It'll go in the permit that's issued as a result of site plan review. So it has to be instituted at the planning board meeting by vote.
But how does that get, okay, so I'm with you, but how does that? Who's gonna look at that and and follow that up?
Well, if there's, I think if there's a specific condition of approval. With a deadline, just like any of the conditions of approval, those get monitored by staff. As 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 a project develops.
So, so there'll be, is it any staff or should we, or or should the board of selectmen or Korean or whoever say. You, you're responsible for making sure that when there's a condition, just to make sure to follow them. That way there, there's a name with a who's responsible type thing? Cause it it sometimes you get, you know, we were all really busy and we couldn't, we couldn't follow through with this, so. If we're gonna put that type of responsibility, we should put a position with it that's gonna take, that's gonna do that. Whether it's the planning board, uh, code compliance, uh, our our new planner or planner assistant, whatever, you know what I mean?
Right. I I I don't know what the answer is tonight, but I think that that. Once the planning board starts putting in that deadline, the staff will figure out how to assign that deadline to who.
All right.
Not to complicate this, but then we need standardized dates, like deadlines.
Do, I'm sorry?
Need standardized deadlines. You know what I mean? Like, so when somebody comes in and like this exact situation, right, we'd be like, oh, well, you know, you need pavement and you need rocks or whatever. We've done this before. You have three months to do it, right? Once snow falls, it's another three. So then it's standardized. So then somebody else comes in and we're not like, oh, you got two weeks. You you know what I mean? Like, because if we're gonna do deadlines, maybe you just have a generic deadline. Maybe it's six months from when we set it every time. Or is it specific to what we're making a deadline for? And maybe that's not the discussion for tonight. But I think it it's something to look at moving forward if we are doing it.
Going off of Margarita's, I I agree with her. I think it should be, uh, applicant specific. Might have someone who has a big job to do, and you might have someone has a small thing that needs to be done. So you can't say, you'll get three months, you got three months to say move a garbage can or a guy's gonna be done to dirt or something. So I would say getting a a per applicant and even discussing with them and say. When do you feel that you could get this done in a reasonable timeframe and we can work something out? So we're not overburdening them. So they have a good timeframe and they feel good about it and. They feel, I think, that they have, uh, some part of the decision.
That's all, that's all part of the, that's all part of the communications that happens as a result of the application being approved.
Right.
You would have your conditions and you have your conditions, as OZ, OJ said. And your planning is a fact, which we've been, I've been relaxed at. You know, we all have what, we're gonna have to be a little better at that too, but it's. It's something that we need to, we need to do so. So that we're not taking all this time to talk about it. It it should be just a matter of fact that it happens. All right, we spend enough time on that. What else was there?
This far, pass me.
OJ, I have a question. About the wastewater capacity. Maybe you can help me figure this out. So. When South Peak gave us, and again, I'm thinking about. All the little things that, and I know we haven't met our, we're only at forty percent. And right, you know, now you you've got whatever the town's gonna do to, um, as far as testing and stuff. And what we're giving away allocations now, like for. We're gonna be for the, uh, housing up here for, what's his name? Copley. Uh, if Mark comes in and wants. Fifteen bedrooms there, there's gonna be fifteen more water and sewer depth, things that are on it. When I, when I looked at South Peak Resorts two thousand and fourteen, the math. That they gave us. I look on that and. It details the thousand and eighteen units. But there is a lot, a thing on there that shows. And this is all based on the calculations of acres and square feet for how many units are supposed to be there for each piece of property. But there's, there's nothing on there that says anything about. Like, for instance, um. What what's the lift? Timbertown Lift? So Timbertown Lift is on South Peak property. But it's not in this calculation. So there's a lot of properties, square footage that was taken up by Timbertown Lift. But yet it wasn't taken out of the matrix of the thousand and eighteen lots. And if I look at, for example, I know the basis of design is supposed to be gone, but. The basis of design was using four bedrooms for every house. I don't know whether these new big houses over there have more than four bedrooms. And they were only, their demands for the water flow, which equals to the sewer flow. It it's gotta be more or less based on those, those, the amount of bedrooms they have in there. And then when you look at the commercial for South Peak, you look at the basis of design, the only commercial that was. A lot underneath the, the commercial domain was for the clubhouse and G lift base area, which is where Temi Base Camp is. So now I'm hearing about all the other development that may wanna happen over there. That's, that's. Commercial a- a- and the South Peak parking lot. So I'm thinking, where is, where is all this? How does all this stuff? Work? It it just doesn't seem like the numbers are adding up that way. Have you looked at all of that?
I I brought this point up years ago, when I discovered it, that that the basis of design. And the signed developer agreement. Um, both alluded to a a bunch of commercial development on that side and on that property. You know, it talked about restaurants and then hotels and and retail and baselifts. But it never included those in the, um. Well, except for, as you just mentioned, the 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 G lift in the building next to it. But none, nothing else was included in the, um, calculation of water and sewer, but it was included in the master plan. Um, it was, it was included in the, in the development agreement. It just wasn't included in the calculations back then. I mean, right from the get go, all of that stuff was planned over there. All of that stuff was in the master plan.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, when I look at the master plan, I I don't see. It relating to a bunch of other commercial other than where the G lift area was. Cause when I talked to Karina, she said Paul's all playing around around the G lift. That's a Karina. The G lift is in the, uh, Temi Base Camp. The other thing that I think about here, OJ, is that, so the town's developing that water tank up there along with South Peak. Which means that there's gonna be more water capacity. But having extra water capacity to put to these thousand and eighteen units for the commercial development. It's just gonna be more gallons used because there's more commercial development. Or more capacity because there's more bedrooms than what was originally planned under the thousand and eighteen at four bedrooms. We don't have any bigger sewer plant. So how are we giving up? Even though we're giving up more water because we've got the tanks going in, we're not increasing the sewer end of it. So that, that's a whole nother thing here. And again. It only relates, I only related or asked you this question because when it comes to. More people coming in and wanting more water or more sewer, more bathrooms, more this or that. How are we supposed to react to that? I just don't wanna get to the point where we overcommit the town and all of a sudden. The town's staring at a thirty million dollar or forty or whatever it is, sewer treatment plant, and if the voters voted down, then what are we gonna be? You know, I mean, it it could. I mean, people could get, they could say, no, we don't want this anymore.
Well, 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 investigating what the legal options are that we have, and I think we talked about this at the last board meeting or. One or two meetings ago.
Well, the board of selectmen have talked about it, right? And that's why I was asking you, yeah.
Right. I mean, you heard our discussion and the discussion led to, um.
Asking Jason.
Asking Jason to to look into what are our options and and talking to us about that. So you'll probably be online when he does that.
All right. It just, it it, I just don't want to get away from us at all. I just, I feel like we're. We're a little, maybe at that little mouse bites or, you know, just just taking little bites of it, but. We s- we are eating away at that. Between forty and eighty percent mark, you know, and. I just don't wanna get to, there's gonna be a point somewhere where it's gonna. It's gonna come to a quick stop, I would think. You know, you say, wait a minute here, we're, we don't have enough now for all of our commitments and they wanna come here and do that, you know? That's the point I think that we're gonna look at. And and I think Ray alluded to that and he said, you gotta have enough of a safety factor, you know? You know, but I I I just, I looked at it and I just, I I just get concerned about it every time someone comes to the planning board and wants to. Have a little bit here and a little bit there and it wasn't planned. That that's. That's my. All right. There was something in the packets about from legal inquiries to the town manager. Um, from Seacriston Johnson, I just got this. I haven't had a chance to read it, but, um, did you get a copy of it, OJ?
Well, this is what we came into.
Yeah.
No, I, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay, all right. Um, you should probably, whoever listening, could you make sure that OJ gets a copy of the. Um, handout that was at our seat for the legal inquiries from. Uh, legal inquiries to the town manager and subject was RSA six seventy four, call in twenty two. It it was that, it was at our seats. And they didn't put one at your seat, cause I think they knew you were, were not gonna be here.
Yeah, it might be in my mailbox. I mean, they knew I was not gonna be there tonight.
All right. Other than that. I. I'm done the agenda. Does anyone else have anything they wanna talk about? Oh, I don't believe so. Um. OJ, you all set?
I'm all set.
All right. Well, Margarita is not here, but I would like to be sure. She's here. I know she's in the bathroom, but. Well, you don't have any public online, just checking. I'd like to thank Margarita for volunteering, could you? She volunteered for as an alternate. Certainly gonna miss her and, uh.
Why is she not staying on?
She is off, you came on and she resigned because she's moved to Woodstock, okay?
Oh, I didn't know that.
That she just, she let us know tonight. So. She got went to the bathroom, so it can't. Hold on any longer. But I want to say thank you for all of her help. Oh, she's back. And we're talking about, we're, we're, we're at the end of the meeting, we're talking about you and I, I, I wanted to thank you for all your supports.
Yeah, this is awesome. Thank you guys.
Now, if you ever come back in Lincoln again, feel free to.
Hopefully one day I can come back.
Feel free to put your name in. I encouraged you to do that first time and I think you've been a help, for sure.
Yeah.
Appreciate all your time and and coming.
Yes, Margarita, thank you and good luck with your move.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, maybe I'll try to hook up with good stuff.
You're thinking Joe bad, you got Bonnie over there. All right.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
There you go, OJ. Who wants to second it? You know, I don't want. Okay, I'll second it. Thanks for seconding. All who's in favor? Thank you, OJ.
Thank you.
There you go, Carol. We're trying to get out of here. Carol, give me one thing, please.
What's?
Um, Phil, whoever gave me the. Planning board stuff with signatures, I'm gonna take it home and read it first so I can make sure I'm planning. And I will, I will bring it back to them before they can do.